I am going to go ahead then, I call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Um, I'll ask Ms. Gabby Elizondo, a representative for the Chicago Department of Aviation, to record the minutes of this meeting. And at this time, Gabby, can you do the roll call?
Yes. Linda Shum?
Yes.
Zach Bowman?
Yes.
Valdana Chalik?
Present.
Alan Gapka? Pam Zadarek? Representative Angelica Guerrero Cuellar, here. Representative Martin J. Moylan. Senator Stephen Landak. Senator Laura Murphy. Um, there are four of the nine members present, we do not have quorum yet. Um, oh. Senator Stephen Landak.
I see him mouthing present, but we can't hear him.
You may need to unmute your phone, I had to hit star six to unmute.
Um. Now we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Great. So there are five of the nine members present, there is a majority of members present, and therefore there is quorum for the transaction of committee business.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask you to raise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
America.
of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, the next item of order is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was held February sixteenth of this year, 2022. The draft minutes were distributed by the Advisory Committee members prior to this meeting, or distributed to the committee members. Are there any corrections to the draft minutes?
Madam Chair, this is Valdana. I just noticed one typo in the middle of page one. Um, it says that the following member was absent at the time of the roll call. Um, but there were actually several, several members that were absent, so the, the tense should just, um, be changed to past tense and say members where, or, or, um, a plural to say, uh, C-word to plural.
Hello? Is that Pam? It is Pam. Hi there.
Hi there.
We are making corrections, asking for corrections to the draft minutes, and Valdana noted a change. Gabby, did you get that?
I did, yes.
Are there any other corrections to the draft minutes?
Oh, excuse me, I was muted. I, I wish I would have been recording these meetings, so I could really actually, because I, I know there was something I contributed last time. So we, do we have access to, to these meetings, or can we record them on our own?
Um, the meetings are recorded, and, correct me Gabby, can you explain, I believe they're put on the, um, CDA website?
Yes, that's correct, they are available, um, through the website, um, there is a link for the meeting minutes, the, the video, which takes you to YouTube, so that's publicly available.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, are there any other corrections to the draft minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes as final, or as, as corrected?
Um, stop.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes, Gabby, will you call the roll call vote?
Yes. Linda Shum?
Yes.
Zach Bowman?
Yes.
Valdana Chalik?
Yes.
Alan Gapka?
Yes.
Pamela Zadarek?
Yes.
Representative Angelica Guerrero Cuellar?
Yes.
Representative Martin J. Moylan? Senator Stephen Landak?
Yes.
Uh, Senator Laura Murphy? And the motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, under the committee discussion items, the first item is parliamentary procedures. I've asked if maybe we could do a little, um, brief presentation on parliamentary procedures, just to help us put more structure into our meeting. Ryan, I believe Ryan Anderson is prepared to give that presentation, Ryan, would you go ahead and do that?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Wanted to, uh, give a brief, since, uh, some, we have some new members joining us, and it's been a while since we met, it would be a good opportunity to, um, go over the parliamentary, uh, some basic parliamentary procedures. Share my screen. Um, and, uh, the purpose of this was primarily, um, so that we can make sure that all the committee members, um, you know, have a way to, uh, speak and be heard, um, during the meetings, and we're able to conduct the meetings, uh, as efficiently as we can. Um, I am in no way an expert in parliamentary procedures. Uh, however, um, most of you know me as working with the, um, Department of Aviation and the whole O'Hare Noise, uh, Compatibility Commission, as well as the Midway Noise Compatibility Commissions, and both organizations, uh, rely on parliamentary procedures to conduct their meetings, and they do, uh, conduct those meetings very, uh, effectively, uh, using these procedures. So we're just gonna go through some basics, uh, some basic terms today, um, just to, um, get everybody up to speed. So, uh, parliamentary procedures actually, um, were developed, uh, during the, um, English parliaments, and came over with the early settlers, uh, as a way of, um, conducting meetings. Uh, it became uniform when, uh, Henry Robert published his manual, uh, Robert's Rules of Order in, uh, eighteen seventy-six, and it's really been, uh, standard ever since. Uh, and it's a basic handbook for, uh, majority of organizations, clubs, and, and other committees on, uh, how to conduct meetings. Uh, again, it allows, most importantly, it allows everyone to be heard and make a decision, uh, without confusion. Um, I think majority of the, um, uh, publicly elected officials would, um, agree that, you know, we want to avoid making decisions when we're unsure as to, you know, what we're voting on. So this really helps to make sure that we're all clear as to what we're deciding on. Uh, it improves the efficiency of the committee, so we're able to move through, uh, agenda items, uh, effectively and efficiently. Uh, so there are some basic terms we want to go over. Um, obviously, we just talked about quorum. Uh, quorum is the minimum number of members who must be present for business to be, uh, validly transacted. So, uh, if the committee does not have quorum, then they are not able to, uh, take votes or, uh, take any action on any, uh, items. Typically, quorum is achieved with the majority of members present, uh, so the current, uh, Residential Sound Insulation Program Advisory Committee is made up of nine members, uh, therefore the majority is five, so quorum is five for this committee currently. Um, officers, uh, the presiding officer is known as the chair, um, referred to as Mr. Chairman, or Madam Chairman, or Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair, um, when presiding. Um, the, uh, chair is really the person who, um, runs the meeting, um, makes sure that the agenda is being followed, and that everyone is speaking in turn and in orderly fashion. Uh, a vice chair acts as the chair's alternate when the chair is absent. Uh, if the committee does not have a chair, for instance, uh, this committee only has a, a chair and not a vice chair, uh, the chair can temporarily appoint, uh, a chair pro tempore, which, uh, allows, uh, the, a person to act as a chair temporarily, uh, in the absence, um, of a chair. Uh, the pro, uh, temporary terminates at the return of the chair or, uh, adjournment of the meeting, whichever comes first. Uh, bylaws, uh, bylaws are a document that contains the basic rules of the committee relating, uh, itself as an organization, and it contains, um, various, um, rules and rights, um, for the members, as well as how elections should be conducted, uh, schedule of meeting, meetings, um, and various other rules. Uh, currently, this committee does not have any bylaws, um, that's gonna be an agenda item, uh, coming up in a little bit that we'll discuss. Uh, and a motion, uh, a motion is how members get their say. It's a formal proposal by a committee member on a subject which the committee can take action on. Um, for instance, uh, changing, uh, the order of items on the agenda, um, could be, uh, a motion, or making a motion, uh, to adjourn the meeting. Um, uh, but, uh, making a motion is a way for each member to, uh, propose an action, and we'll go into that in more detail. And of course, the agenda is the order of business the committee is to follow in order to address all important subjects. Uh, adherence is required by the Illinois Opens Meetings Act, which this committee is, um, obliged to, um, comply with, and provides assurance to the members that all topics on the agenda will be discussed. Changing the order of business on the agenda requires a majority vote of the committee. So, uh, making a motion, uh, there's several steps, um, in making a motion, um, that allows, uh, committee members to, uh, effectively communicate their proposal, and for each of the committee members to understand the proposal, and, uh, discuss it. Uh, we'll go through all these in more detail. But basically, the five steps are basically obtaining the floor, which is getting recognized, um, uh, by the chair and wishing to speak, presenting your proposal, uh, getting someone else to s- s- express support for that proposal. Yeah, debating, uh, the motion, um, so the committee would then discuss, uh, the, uh, the motion, uh, and then there would be a vote, um, and there would be a decision made as to whether the motion moves forward or not. So we'll go through each of those in a little more detail. Um, so if, if I were to make a motion, I would need to wait until the last person has finished speaking, and address this chair by stating my name and wait to be recognized. So for instance, I would say, Madam Chair, this is Ryan Anderson speaking. Uh, I would then make my motion and state it as clear as I can. Um, for example, I move that we modify the agenda so that the public comment section comes after item four, meeting minutes. And at this point, um, the chair would, um, look for someone else to, uh, support that motion, which we would call a second, and so we'd have to wait for another member to second the motion in order for it to be considered. And so the chair would say, there's a motion, um, um, and if it's seconded, the motion would, um, uh, the chair would state, there's a motion and a second to modify the agenda so that the public comment section comes after item four, so she would restate the motion, uh, that I proposed, um, and she would ask if there is any discussion. The, at that point, um, I, as the person who proposed the motion, uh, am allowed to speak first, if I would like to elaborate on my motion. Uh, for instance, um, Madam Chair, I'm concerned, uh, that this meeting may go long, and so I'd like to provide the public with the opportunity to comment first, because they may not be available to stay till the end. Uh, so then the chair would go through and, and allow any other, um, members to speak, uh, again, after all speakers have had a chance to speak, uh, if there's no more discussion, uh, then the, uh, vote is taken and the results are announced, so the chair would call for a roll call vote, and the motion would pass, or it does not, based on, uh, the number of votes. So just a few, uh, um, questions relating to motions. Is your motion in order? Meaning, is the motion that you're proposing relating to the business at hand, the business for this committee, and business related to, uh, items on the agenda? Does it need a second? Um, pretty much, majority of motions need a second. Uh, it indicates, another member would also like to discuss the motion, so there, i- it's not just one person wanting to discuss, uh, an item. Uh, motions that don't need a second would be, um, if there's a, a point of order, which means, um, someone is questioning, uh, uh, whether or not, uh, the, um, discussion at hand is, is in order, um, based on parliamentary procedures, or a point of information, um, w- whether it's just a question of information, that does not need, uh, a d- a second. And most votes are, uh, require majority, or most motions require a majority vote. Uh, and here we have, uh, on this last slide, just some simple, uh, sample language used in making motions. So, for instance, if I want to introduce, uh, new business, I could say, I would say, I move that we, um, for, in my example, uh, move the agenda item. Uh, if we want to postpone discussion for a certain item, say, I move to postpone the discussion until such and such date, or we can say, I move to table the motion, if there's a motion, uh, uh, on the table being discussed, you can table it, meaning that, um, uh, we would stop discussion, uh, and that motion would not be discussed, uh, until, um, someone brings up the matter, uh, at a later time, which would say, I move to take from the table. Point of order is, uh, if you're protesting, uh, a breach of the rules or conduct established by the committee. Uh, request for information, uh, point of information, uh, for instance, if someone, if Doug is giving his, um, statistics, and, um, someone has, um, uh, additional questions regarding, uh, the odor inspection or COVID protocols, simple point of information, Madam Chair, I would like to ask Doug Blanchard a question regarding the odor inspection. And the chair must, um, would allow that, that question, um, if it's pertinent, uh, to be asked and answered. And of course, adjourning the meeting, I move that we adjourn, would require a second, and, uh, majority of the committee members, uh, to agree. So again, that's just a, um, a simple, uh, overview of parliamentary procedures. Uh, hopefully, it's helpful for the committee, uh, moving forward and conducting the meetings, allowing everyone to give the opportunity to speak, and also, most importantly, be, um, clear, uh, on what is being discussed. That concludes the presentation, Chairman Shum.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna move on to the next item, the nomination of a chair. Uh, as most of you know, I'll be stepping down as chairman of this committee, and as a result, the committee needs to nominate and vote for a new chair. The intention at this meeting is to accept nominations only for the chair, and we will proceed with voting for the nominated members at the next meeting. Uh, since we have new members participating for the first time, this gives everyone a chance to get to know each other a little bit before the vote. So that said, the floor is now open for nominations for chairmen.
Madam Chair?
Uh, and
Pam Zadarek Chair?
I, the chair recognizes Pam?
I propose that, uh, Angie Guerrero Cuellar is, is for chair of our committee.
Okay. Uh, there's been a nomination for Representative Guerriero Cuellar? Is there a second?
Second, this is Steve Landak.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations?
Madam Chair, this is Representative Guerrero Cuellar.
Uh, the chair rec- recognizes the representative.
Madam Chair, are we also accepting nominations for the vice chair as well now?
No, that'll be the next point of order.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Valdana.
Uh, chair recognizes Valdana.
Um, do, does the nominee have to accept or decline the nomination?
Good point.
I bel- I believe the, the nominee has to accept, uh, the nomination.
Robert's rule. Okay. So that said, Representative, um, Garrett, Garrett Ariel, do you accept the nomination?
Representative Guerrero Cuellar accepts the nomination.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have another question, um, and this is for the group, maybe nobody has an answer, but, um, can we nominate somebody that's not present to the meeting?
Yes, we can nominate, as long as they're on the committee, they can be nominated, the problem is they can't accept because they're not here.
That's true, good point, never mind.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, with that, the nominations for chair are closed. We will vote on the, um, chairman at the next meeting. So with that, I move on to nomination of the vice chair, and in the past, we have not had a vice chair, but I believe it's in the best interest of the committee to elect a vice chair, so the committee can still conduct meetings in the absence of the chairman. Uh, like nominations for the chair, the intention of this meeting is to accept nominations only, and voting will occur at the next meeting, so the floor is now open for nominations for vice chair.
Madam Chairman?
The chair recognizes Pam?
Hi, I propose I, uh, accept the nomination for vice chair.
Okay, Pam has nominated herself for vice chair, is there a second?
Madam Chair, this is Representative Guerrero Cuellar, I nominate Pam, I second that motion.
Okay, we have a second. Pam, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the nominations for the vice chair. Uh, again, we will do the election for both the chairman and the vice chairman at our next meeting. Um, moving on, the next item of order is a proposal of drafting bylaws. This committee has not had bylaws in the past, and was kind of operated basically by Robert's Rule of Order, but, you know, as things become more complicated, it's probably in our best interest to have bylaws. The purpose of this discussion right now is not to develop bylaws, but to, um, see if the committee is interested, or get the committee's feelings on drafting bylaws. So with that, I'm gonna start just by
Madam Chair?
Uh, chair recognizes Alan.
Yeah, um, regarding, you know, the parliamentary procedure and all that, I was just wondering, like, because we had an established committee, and, um, so I was wondering, not that I object to the additional members, but how they actually, you know, were admitted without us, like, voting on it.
Um, the additional members were added to the committee through the statutes, and the statutes are what, um, basically established the committee to begin with, so as the, as the statutes change, the membership changed. So it wasn't a committee decision to add members.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to go back to bylaws, or is there, is there any discussion or opinion on bylaws? Or do I have a motion that the committee drafts bylaws?
Madam Chair? Rich?
I'm sorry, who spoke first there? The representative, did you speak?
Yes, this is Representative Guerrero Cuellar. Ma- Madam Chair? Thank you, Madam Chair, is it possible that you can provide some context as to what the expectations or the roles that you expect for the bylaws? Uh, and what the bylaws would entail necessarily for this committee?
The, the thought process was to, um, probably take the bylaws, uh, you know, rather than start from scratch writing bylaws, I'm not a fan of, of starting from scratch, but take existing bylaws. The city of Chicago has the, um, I draw a blank on it, the two committees, the, for O'Hare and Midway, what are the committees, Valdana?
Uh, there, the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission and Midway Noise Compatibility Commission, um, committees that have bylaws, and the idea was to, um, take those bylaws and adopt them to this committee, um. And, uh, if I may, I would like to make a motion to draft the bylaws based on those two samples, um, and the CDA can draft the bylaws and, and share them with the committee members before the next meeting, so they have a chance to review and then, uh, make any proposed edits as needed.
Okay, so can I ask you to, um, restate the motion, just in a simplified manner?
Uh, I make a motion to, for the CDA to draft the bylaws.
Okay, and is there a second?
Madam Chair, it's Pam Zadarek. I actually
Okay, uh, the discussion comes after the second for the motion, so let's see if there's a second for this motion first.
My second, Alan Gapka.
Okay, Alan seconded, now, now the discussion, the chair recognizes Pam.
Are those bylaws anywhere on the Fly Chicago website? So we can all see what they look like?
Um, Valdana, I'll let you address this.
I'm not sure, the, the place where that would probably be for the, uh, ONCC would probably be the ONCC website, I can verify and, and, um, share a link if they are on the website.
I'm on it right now, excuse me Pam Zadarek again, I don't know if that's what I have to do, but I'm on the website right now, and I know that, like, the, uh, the resource, some of this stuff is kinda hard to find, this is, and I'm just
I'm gonna, this is, Pam, what I'm gonna suggest is that, um, CDA takes the minutes, uh, or the bylaws, excuse me, makes basic modifications or modifications to them to make them appropriate for this committee. Prior to our next meeting, those modifications need to be done, and the minutes sent out to, or the, I keep saying minutes, the bylaws, draft bylaws sent out to all of the committee members, and at that time, the committee members can then review what the draft bylaws are, and turn around, and if there's any, um, changes, updates, issues, send those back again prior to the meeting, so that if it's something that everybody seems to concur with, they can be incorporated. It'll just help the, e- expedite the discussion at the next meeting. Um, that's my suggestion in how we approach this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on drafting the bylaws? Gabby, can I ask you for a roll call vote on the motion to draft bylaws?
Yes. Linda Shum?
Yes.
Zach Bowman?
Yes.
Valdana Chalik?
Yes.
Alan Gapka?
Yes.
Pam Zadarek?
Yes.
Representative Angelica Guerrero Cuellar?
Yes.
Representative Martin J. Moylan? Senator Stephen Landak?
Yes.
Senator Laura Murphy? And the motion passed.
Okay, thank you. So, CDA will work on a, a draft version, and that will be sent out to all of the committee members prior to the next meeting. The next agenda item is the confirmation statistics, and Vildana, do you want to update us on the statistics?
Yes, Madam Chair, I defer to Doug Blanchard with CMC Partners, who is the Director of the RSIP, Residential Sound Insulation Program, um, and then I will cover the next agenda item, which is a CDA update.
Okay, the Chair recognizes Doug, are you on?
Yes, I'm here, Madam Chair. Um, so yeah, I do have some, uh, some new statistics. Uh, first of all, I want to point out that, um, four thousand seven hundred and seventy-four homes have complained of odors, uh, from windows and doors, and of that, uh, two thousand six hundred and thirty are from homes around the Midway Airport, and two thousand one hundred and forty-four are from homes around the O'Hare Airport. Now, um, from those complaints, we have conducted odor inspections in three thousand nine hundred and forty homes, and that consists of two, uh, two thousand two hundred and thirty-six at Midway and one thousand seven hundred and four at O'Hare. And we have confirmed odor at two thousand sixty-five homes, uh, that's one thousand one hundred and seventy-five at Midway and eight hundred and ninety at O'Hare. And we are still doing, uh, work on this issue, we're still, uh, doing some odor inspections, and, um, we have, uh, odor inspections pending at an additional six hundred and eighty-five homes, which consists of two hundred and ninety-three at Midway and three hundred and ninety-two at O'Hare. And I also wanted to point out that we do have, um, complaints of, um, uh, mechanical problems in windows, uh, in addition to the odor complaints, and we have confirmed that there are mechanical problems in one thousand fifty-two homes. That includes seven hundred and twelve at Midway and three hundred and forty homes at O'Hare. Um, so that's all I have for the updated statistics right now, and all of this, I forgot to point out, all of this data is through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two.
And Doug, that will be put out on the CDA website, correct?
Yes, we post those on the, um, flychicago.com website, and, um, I believe we requested that, maybe it was today, maybe it was yesterday, so I'm not sure if it will, uh, get posted by tomorrow, uh, but it'll be very soon after that, if not tomorrow.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, this is Alan Gabka, may I ask Doug a question, please?
Yeah, the Chair recognizes Alan.
So, uh, we're, we're pretty much set, though, on the first seven hundred or so, is that, are we going to be starting to replace windows, or?
Um, to answer the first part of your question, yes, the first seven hundred and nine homes have been sequenced by the Committee, um, so they were, uh, sequence number one through seven hundred and nine, and we are still, uh, making preliminary preparations to, um, uh, get the first two hundred and twenty-five homes started, and we're hoping to, um, have a homeowner briefing, uh, maybe in August sometime, once all the final preparations for that are complete.
Thank you.
Oh, Pam Zedarch, Madam Chair.
Okay, Chair recognizes Pam.
Doug, can you, uh, you know, it's been many years since I got my windows, two thousand and eleven, uh, can you, uh, elaborate on this homeowner, uh, briefing or whatever that is, I mean, do you, does, do letters go out, or, 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 what's the, what's that first step look like, can you remind me again?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I need to move locations, so I'm on the phone, but I'm gonna stop and get off the Zoom, but I'm still at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Pam had a question, Doug, um, can you address that?
Uh, yes, uh, so, um, when we start a new phase in the program, regardless of what kind of phase it is, we typically send an invitation letter to a homeowner, uh, who is eligible to participate in the program. The invitation letter will, um, tell them when we have a homeowner briefing, and it will have, um, some additional information, uh, usually a, an informational booklet that's given to the homeowner. It basically tells them, we're gonna have a briefing, we're gonna, um, invite everybody who participates, depending on the size of the, um, the package or the location of the homes in the package. We will have one briefing or two briefings or three briefings, depending on the logistics. So we'll invite them to the briefing and we'll explain how the program works, so in this case for, we're calling it odor mitigation phase one for these first two hundred and twenty-five homes, we'll send that invitation letter out for those homes, invite them to the briefing, and then we'll, um, you know, follow through with any paperwork or questions that the homeowners may have, um, for us to, uh, do one of the next steps would, which would be a home inventory appointment, so we have to go into a home and, um, just confirm all of the windows and doors in the home, um, that are still there. Uh, in, in this case, uh, when we're replacing windows that were already replaced, we're probably just going to try to confirm that, um, the homeowner didn't take a, a previously installed window out, or if they, um, put in addition on their house where three windows that used to be there are no longer there anymore, because they put a, a family room out at the back end of their house. Um, so that's, that's the start of the thing, an invitation letter, uh, homeowner briefing, and then home inventory appointments in each specific home.
And that homeowner briefing, Doug, if, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn or if I'm do, not identifying myself, and, or if we could just actually have like a discussion, but, uh, now the homeowner briefing, will that be like, um, you'll have a place where you'll have, uh, the first two hundred, or say it's, um, one hundred and thirty-five are from, uh, the Midway area, so may, you'll, maybe you'll make that one or two, would that be, that's like a public space you'd have that at, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there, is, is there any COVID concerns right now, anything, holding anything up, or like, any in-person meetings or anything like that, or, or inspections, or, uh, are we seeing any impacts from COVID right now on any of this stuff?
Madam Chair, can I continue to, um, answer those kind of questions?
Yes, please, Doug.
Okay, um, so yes, uh, we are continuing to monitor the COVID situation. Um, uh, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, um, monitors the situation in each county in the United States, it's over three thousand counties, I forget the exact number. Um, the two counties of concern for us is DuPage County and, uh, Cook County, and we are currently in a high, uh, CCL level, um, COVID, I, I forget what CCL stands for now. Um, uh, anyway, it's, there's three levels, low, medium, and high, we're currently in a high level, and, um, there are certain precautions people should take if they live in a county, uh, with a high level. So we, what we do in that situation is we ask the homeowner, uh, do you have any concerns with us coming into your home? And, uh, regardless of a homeowner's preference, we are requiring all of our, uh, people participating in the program to wear a face covering when we go into someone's home. So that's odor inspections, uh, going on. Uh, we are hoping to have a homeowner briefing in person in August, uh, we are gonna continue to monitor that. If we do have it, um, in person, we are also going to record the meeting in case someone does not feel comfortable going into a room with three hundred people in it, uh, they will be able to watch the video, um, after the fact, so we will make that available for people, um, if they don't feel comfortable coming into a room because of COVID, or their own personal, um, conditions, uh, with respect to COVID. I think that answered everything.
Madam Chair, this is Representative Guerrero Cuellar.
Yeah, the Chair recognizes the representative.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, this is a question for Doug, um, when we're talking about possibly having a, an in-person meeting, um, is there a consideration that we would have this meeting maybe in a central point between O'Hare and Midway, or are we looking to have this meeting one at Midway and one at O'Hare? Um, just things to, just questions to consider for the residents, since we have a, a good mileage apart from between both airports.
Yeah, that's, that's a good concern, and yes, we are planning on having one meeting near Midway and one meeting near O'Hare. Um, so as soon as we, uh, get that date planned, we'll know the specific venue and everything, and typically we do these in the evening, um, so hopefully we can get as much participation as possible.
Thank you, Doug. Um, with that, I'm moving on to the next agenda item, the CDA update, Vildana, would you like to give us the update?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, I, I just wanted to, uh, mention that the deadline, um, to call and request an odor inspection has passed, that was February twenty-first of this year, which was, um, about a week after our last meeting. Um, currently, the CDA is finalizing the first quarter quarterly report, and, uh, the goal is for that report to be sent out within a week. And then we will also send out the second quarter quarterly report shortly thereafter. Uh, we took some time working on this report, um, the, um, restructured it to make it more user-friendly. Uh, regarding the Midway showroom, um, that showroom is substantially complete, uh, the products are in place, and, uh, the CDA is putting finishing touches, including, um, uh, making sure that the showroom meets safety requirements, and the showroom, uh, will be open in time for the homeowner briefings later this summer, um, so the goal, uh, the plan is to share, um, the information about the showroom, uh, with invitations to the homeowner briefing, and then, uh, the day after the homeowner briefings, um, the showroom will be open to the, um, two hundred and twenty-five participants, um, in odor mitigation phase one. Um, and regarding the odor mitigation phase one, like Doug mentioned, uh, we are finalizing homeowner briefing materials and, uh, preparing to schedule the homeowner briefing, which kicks off a series of events, um, beginning with home inventory appointments, um, updating the specifications and other contract documents to tailor them to odor mitigation, um, as opposed to, um, the regular, um, noise mitigation, uh, projects, um, and then also bidding construction contracts, uh, which is, um, about a sixty-step process, um, and, um, I also wanted to mention that, uh, the CDA has, um, the architect onboard, and the architect is currently working on updating the technical specifications, um, as well as other materials related to odor mitigation, and, um, the architect will, uh, be conducting the home inventories, um, soon after the homeowner briefing. And that concludes my update.
Madam Chair, this is Representative Guerrero Cuellar.
The four representatives, I'll get it next time, recognizes the representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, these are questions for Vildana. Um, in terms of the information that's gonna be provided to the two hundred and twenty-five participants, um, the packets, the letters, are Committee members gonna receive a copy beforehand to see what is being sent, uh, do we have an opportunity to review it, or is it final, and then we're just, if we can receive an electronic copy of that information packet?
Uh, typically, we do not share, uh, the invitation materials, but I will, I will make a note of your request.
Thank you, if you can just provide an electronic copy, that would be, that would suffice, I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to review it, also, will this information be provided or translated, if any of the homeowners have provided that they speak a second language, such as Spanish or Polish?
Yes, um, a lot of our RSIP materials are already translated into Spanish and Polish, we might, may have to tailor, because, um, the odor mitigation materials are slightly different than regular sound insulation materials, we may have to, um, um, refresh those translations, but yes, upon request, uh, we will provide translations and interpreters in any language, um, including Spanish and Polish.
Thank you, that's all.
Madam Chair, Pam Zedarch.
The Chair recognizes Pam.
Vildana, I have a couple of questions for you, uh, first one is regarding the showroom, um, can members of the Committee preview the showroom before the public does? So if there's any concerns or anything that we need, feel needs, needs to be addressed, that can be done in time for the opening for the public?
Um, I, I'll take your request, um, that, that tour would have to be arranged separately, uh, but yes, I will, I will inquire.
Do you have any information as to where the location of the showroom is at?
It is, um, at the Midway property, um, at Midway, um, Airport property, and the exact location will be shared in the invitation packets to the homeowners.
Okay, um, you stated that the architect is onboard, who is that?
Uh, that's Globetrotters.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, I apologize?
Globetrotters.
Can you, can you spell that for me, I, I don't, I don't understand what you're saying?
Globetrotters, G-L-O-V-E.
Oh, like, like the, like the back.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, all right, you know, I thought that's what you were saying, but I thought that can't be right, so, but Globetrotters, interesting. And then my last, uh, question is actually, uh, threefold, um, who are the current manufacturers approved to make the windows, the primary doors, and the storm doors?
Um, off the top of my head, I know that the, an approved, uh, window manufacturer is Larson, I would have to look up the manufacturers for, for doors, but, um, Doug, do you, do you, would you know that information? Uh, if not, we can, we can provide it at a later time.
Off, I, like you, I remember the windows, uh, Larson is a manufacturer for the windows, but I can't remember the doors right now, um, because the specifications have changed over the past several years, and I, I just don't remember right now.
Okay, maybe you could send that out when you, when you know. Okay? Thank you. Any other, any other discussion?
Uh, Chairman, this is Representative Guerrero Cuellar.
Uh, the Chair recognizes the representative.
Thank you, uh, Vildana, um, if, you said that if we wanted to see the showroom, we would have to make that, uh, tour ourselves, can you share the contact information of who to contact at Midway Airport, so I can make that arrangement?
Oh, no, the CDA would arrange a tour, I just meant that, um, the, the, a special tour would be, have to be arranged.
Well, that's what I mean, I would like a special tour before the residence, so if you can share that information, I can reach out to the airport, considering that it's in my district, so.
Well, I, I mean, I represent the airport in this case, and I can arrange a tour, I just, uh, I just need to verify some things.
Okay, if you can, please, I would like a tour before the residence.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to move on to the next item, um, the process to demonstrate extreme hardship. Um, we need to discuss how to comply with the new language of the legislation that was passed last December, December tenth. Specifically, the legislation tasks us with developing a process in which homeowners can demonstrate extreme hardship. I don't think at this meeting, just having a big discussion, we're gonna come up with a solution at the meeting, so what I'm going to rec, or propose is that we go around to each member of the Committee and ask just for their input, and I'm looking really at two items, what, or two thoughts, what should be considered when talking about extreme hardship, and how do we measure that or determine that, or, or, you know, capitalize it, you know, if we come down and have to put a priority or something. So I'd like to go around to each Committee member, give everybody an opportunity to just talk, and then, if, my next thought is to kind of do like we're doing with the bylaws, um, designate people to put together, uh, you know, consolidate the thoughts that were put together in this meeting, and send it to the Committee members prior to the next meeting. and send it to the committee members prior to the next meeting so we can review it and kind of come up with maybe a, a beginning of a plan. And that way, maybe at the next meeting, we can streamline a little bit to basically put this one to bed. So with that, I'm going to go around and just ask each of you to give me your input on, or your thoughts on extreme hardship. And I'm doing this in order that we did the roll call. So Zach, you're first. What are your thoughts? And again, I'm looking for what should be included in extreme hardship? And then how do we measure or prioritize or encapsulate those items?
Good, thank you, Madam Chair. So I think to your first question, that the legislation kind of has us covered in that it provides a definition of extreme hardship. So I'll just read from the by statute for a second, as used in this.
Maybe you could pull that up. I'm sorry to interrupt, Zach. Gabby, maybe you could pull that up on the screen so we can look at it.
Can we see it now?
Madam Chair, I have a point of clarification, please.
Okay, the chair recognizes the representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the last meeting that we had, not a public meeting, but we had with Commissioner Re and the new legislators that were appointed to the committee, she clarified that Zach is providing his own, he is not providing legal counsel as the attorney representing the committee, but he is providing his own opinion as a member of the committee. So I want that as a point of clarification.
Correct, thank you.
Right, yeah, definitely. I'm not, I'm, this committee does not have
legal counsel.
Right, does not have, I am an attorney, I'm not the committee's attorney.
Okay, so we're going to go back to Zach, your thoughts on what should be included as extreme hardship and how it shall be quantified or calculated?
Right, okay, so what I would say to your first point of, you know, what should constitute extreme hardship? I think the legislation specifies, and here I'll, I'll read this sentence I'm looking at. As used in the subsection, extreme hardship means liquid infiltration of the window or door, health and medical condition of the resident, and residents with sensitivities to smell. So sensitivities related to smell. But I think we have those three components of what constitutes extreme hardship specify, you know, dictated to us from the legislators. And our question becomes, how do residents demonstrate? You know, we're charged in the legislation with developing a process for homeowners to demonstrate that one of those three prongs applies to them. You know, I'm interested to hear the opinions of the other committee members. In my opinion, I don't think the committee should act as an investigator in these situations. I don't think we should be, I, I think we should come up with a system where an expert in one of these fields provides a written confirmation that this circumstance exists for the homeowner. So for example, if it's liquid infiltration, perhaps a someone certified in, you know, construction or architecture with some kind of mechanical expertise could certify that that condition exists in that home. And then we, the committee, would, you know, receive that certification, potentially along with some attestation signed by the homeowner that that condition does in fact exist. And then, you know, done, we acknowledge that it exists in that home. Same for the next two, I believe, the health and medical condition of the resident, and residents with sensitivities related to smell. I personally am not qualified to evaluate someone's health or medical condition or determine whether, you know, like a malodor is a triggering condition for that health or medical situation. So I would recommend that homeowners provide a, essentially a doc, you know, something signed by a licensed medical professional that would attest that they do have a health or medical condition that is exacerbated by the existence of an odorless window. And then that's kind of, you know, we don't look further into it, that's, they're, they're right then in that case because I don't, I don't know what else I could offer. And then sensitivities related to smell is, you know, in my opinion, it would need to be a sensitivity that rises to the level of a health or medical condition and therefore would also be something demonstrated by a doctor's attestation of the existence of that sensitivity. But I, I otherwise don't know how we measure or demonstrate that if it's something less than that. And then in terms of, and I'll wrap up here, but in terms of, I, the legislation, as I read it, I don't think asks us to rank these extreme hard, you know, to decide if someone's extreme hardship is a more extreme hardship than someone else's. It simply asks us to determine if, to, to allow homeowners to demonstrate they do have extreme hardship. And at that point, to me, it becomes a binary, yes or no. These homes have extreme hard, you know, these homeowners have extreme hardship. And I think we would sequence them pursuant to the sequencing order that we have adopted, but just in the group of extreme hardship, of other homes with extreme hardship, rather than try to determine whose situation is the most extreme and whose is the least extreme, and then sequencing those homes pursuant to that. I, I don't think that's what we're being asked to do by the text of the legislation. I think that would be administratively unfeasible to do. So those are, those are my thoughts on developing, you know, my big broad, broad strokes thoughts on developing this process.
Thank you. Next on the roll call was Voldana. So Voldana, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. I, for the most part, I agree with Zach. I would like to provide one clarification regarding the liquid infiltration of the window or door. As I think we communicated at, at the last meeting, the city has awarded a contract that, that is passed with addressing mechanical issues in homes. And that includes liquid infiltration of the window and, or door. And we address those issues as a matter of priority. So I propose that any, any reports of liquid infiltration that comes through this committee be forwarded to the RSIP team that handles warranty services. And then they can, they can make those repairs or take care of, of this issue through the warranty services contract. So I, I would say that this, this item, we might not have to concern ourselves with. But the attitude of health and medical condition as well as sensitivities related to smell, I agree with Zach in that, I don't think I or any of the committee members are equipped to, to determine who has a health or medical condition or sensitivity to smell. And I would also, the way I see it is, I would defer to a health official, a doctor, that would certify that there is a health, medical, or condition or sensitivity related to smell that's also related to the products that are installed in the homes. And then that would have to be submitted to the committee. And I also agree, Zach, in that we probably should stay away from ranking these reports or conditions and simply receive them. And and then to the list of the ten percent or up to ten percent if we're not able to meet the ten percent. One point I wanted to, to bring up, and we don't have to discuss this at this meeting, but just something to be aware of is concerns regarding a patient or homeowner privacy and HIPAA. And how the information that's shared is, is that private information? What are the implications that HIPAA and, and privacy laws? Maybe some, just something to consider for the future. And I, I think that, that's all I had to say on this, this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Alan. The chair recognizes Alan. Alan, are you still here?
I am sorry, I was on mute. I apologize. So I agree, it's, you know, it's hard to, to rank how, how it affects one person as opposed to another. I just know that, you know, well, maybe some people are, you know, more susceptible or ill to begin with. You know, if they already have medical issues. But I know that, you know, for the most part, I mean, I, I remember times where, you know, it just made me dizzy. You know, and I had a day. And so, but I kind of guess, so, you know, you guys kind of covered it already. Other than that, I would just say that I would think that a lot of these people have been complaining already early on. So they're already sequenced, probably, you know, pretty close to the, you know, to the front of the line already. Because they've been, you know, they've been begging for help on this for, for quite a while. And that would be pretty much all I could add to that. Hardship, I, you, we're not including like being able, according to the statute, I think, you know, having difficulty opening the window in case of a fire or things like that, that's not part of it, I guess. So, yeah, like I say, like Zach said, how do you rank? You know, who is more susceptible to the, the fumes that it was, it was, you know, generating? I wouldn't know. That's all I got there.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Pam. Pam, you have the floor.
Okay, and I have thought about this very, very long, for a very long time, okay? First of all, health issues. I, I, I think, Voldana, if I'm not mistaken, you already have people that have sent you information about some of the health issues. I, I know there's a gentleman who contacted me, they said he sent, you know, a doctor's note and all that into you. And basically, what I would suggest, when, I mean, right now, we have a confirmed two thousand sixty-five people. You know, when we're really starting, getting ready to move, move, I think a letter needs to go out to those two thousand sixty-five confirmed homes. And we need to let them know that there is a hardship clause that allows homeowners to, ten percent of each phase that we do to, to be, apply for a hardship replacement, meaning moving to the front of the line. You know, because I, I, I would say, most people don't know that that's even possible right now. So we have to notify people of it, and then we have to let them know the three things that would qualify them for how, if, you know, hardship. A, health issues. And we would need something from a doctor explaining, you know, why they would, should be considered for hardship. And again, yes, I know that there's HIPAA, and I think we probably would all have to sign waivers before we could start reviewing people's personal information or something along those lines to ensure that, you know, that we can't go beyond this committee. As far as water infiltration, I mean, I've seen windows out there that aren't just having problems with water infiltration, but where, you know, there's actual holes in the windows and the windows are moving within their frame and they're, they're, they're dang dangerous. And, you know, I know someone who's had many, many warranty visits from not only the air, you know, the manufacturer, but also from the CDA. And they're still not fixed to their satisfaction and they've spent a lot of their own money. I don't know if they want to even bother moving forward with the warranty issue. So I don't think we should just say that, you know, we're capturing all of these dangerous windows or, you know, problematic windows and degraded windows and water infiltration with the warranty program that is going on. Because let's all remember, the warranty program only covers windows from our friends at Sound Solutions. It does not cover one, windows from Republic or Harvey or anybody else that manufactured windows for confirmed homeowners, homeowners. So we're not going to capture all of those people. So, I mean, I think we definitely have to include them. And then, you know, another part of the hardship is, like, some people who have babies in the rooms that get the most sun and they can't move their babies. Or elderly people with COPD or, you know, cancer or whatever. I know, and that would probably fall under health issues, but, you know, people that just can't breathe in those rooms. So again, I think that we will have, once we figure this all out, we will have to notify the confirmed homeowners of this hardship program, what it entails. And I think the only thing we can do is first in, first out. You know, as those written requests for hardship considerations come in, either via email or, or via, you know, mail, we'll have to put them in as, as when received. You know, which is, you know, how I always thought the window should be done. All this other cockamamie stuff just compliment, complicates the issues and it's all subjective information in which way. So I think it's first in, first out. You know, and we started, we start it off with a letter, again, with a time period. You have sixty days from the date of this letter to submit your request for hardship consideration. And here is the parameters and this is what we need in order to consider it. And, and then they'll, they'll be notified of their place in line based on the information they provided. And, you know, I, as one other point I want to indicate is, I do not think in any way, shape or form do we make it a, incumbent upon the homeowners to hire a contractor to come in their house and take a look at the problems that these windows present with regard to water infiltration, holes, warping, whatever. Because it is, should not be another thing that we are asking homeowners to do, to pay for, to prove their claims of dangerous or degraded or water infiltration issues with windows. I should imagine that people have pictures or can take pictures, you know, and, and that's the kind of proof that I think we should ask for, not that they hire a contractor. I think that's absolutely unconscionable to even consider. People should not have to hire somebody to tell us how bad these windows are. I've seen plenty of proof of it myself. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I respond to Pam's statement? This is Alan. Just once again, I think, yeah, just once again, I think, you know, the people that have these hardships, they've made them known already, you know, those that really do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we're not going to do the discussion right now, just giving everybody the opportunity to voice. Thank you, though. Next representative, Guerrero, why you are?
Thank you, Chairman. So I think some concerns were definitely flagged here with the legislation. So as the author of the legislation, I didn't see this necessarily, some of the flags concerned, because I believe there are methods that we can address. I think one was HIPAA. I think Voldana can testify to this is that the information that we receive from homeowners now is, is private and we don't share it publicly. I, I being a member of the committee have never seen a list with the names and addresses of members. I don't know if we can request that. So I would say that in terms So I would say that in terms of, because nowhere on the application that currently exists, when we do an inspection that states whether there is a medical condition or not, I think we have to be able to open it up, that if, one, if individuals want to go ahead and provide some documentation medically, that's up to them at their discretion. We're not necessarily requesting it. If they want to do that to be added into that hardship pool, they can do so, but, you know, their information will be held private. If we have to, as members, sign an additional piece of document saying that we're not going to go ahead and share the information, or if each property owner is given a specific unique identification number, not necessarily related with your personal information, that's another way of privacy, and we'll be able to cover that. So when I created the legislation to address the health concerns, again, it was really health and medical conditions of a resident is because, and sensitivities to smell is because we have many homeowners who express that, and that wasn't included in the initial inspection, nowhere in the inspection could they indicate that. It was not recorded. So we have to, we should provide property owners with that. So I would say those, the two right there, medical, health and medical conditions residents, and residents of sensitivities related to smell, those would be my two. But nowhere in the legislation am I stating that we're necessarily going to rank them. It's to provide the opportunity for them to submit that information because it is not yet available currently, right now, even with any of the current inspections that are being scheduled. There's nowhere on that form that gives the opportunity for anyone to make those kind of statements or notifications. So as the author of the legislation, I would say that's what my intent was.
Okay. Thank you. Representative Moylan, did you join us?
Also, I should point, maybe this is, once, yeah.
You're broken up. I don't know if it's me or you.
Representative, I think you froze for a minute.
I froze, probably. Okay, I'm.
No, I think Representative Gaurav Koyar, I cannot hear her as well.
Sorry, I heard someone say Representative Moylan, asking Representative Moylan join, so I wasn't sure if I should stop.
Yeah, go ahead and finish if you have something else.
Okay. So, yes, so I wanted to also, those two points, and then I had a question related to this subject matter or to this item on the agenda, so I don't know if I can ask now or ask at a later point regarding that.
If it's okay, I'm going to go ahead, since we're on a thread here, and then I'll recognize you as soon as we're done here, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So I don't believe Representative Moylan has joined us. Senator Landak? Maybe on the other phone. Okay, Senator Murphy? Okay, I'm going to circle back to Representative Angelica. You had a question?
I did. I know we were listing the, just a point of clarification, is I know we were listing two items regarding hardship conversation. Is this a possible conversation that does not, that can continue, but not necessarily be a public meeting, but those for us to discuss offline with the committee members? And that might be something that we have to include in our bylaws.
Yeah, we need to investigate that because I'm not sure if we can do closed-door meetings. So we'll investigate that and hopefully have something by the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
So with that, I thank everybody for their input. Gabby, I'm assuming you did a great recording and a lot of notes, and now you've got to do all the work. Because what I'm going to ask you to do is to attempt to consolidate all of this information, and if you find common threads, if you can kind of point those out. And what I'm hoping to have is a little bit of a framework for the next meeting so that we can, like I said, firm up what our plan is at the next meeting and put this one to rest and move forward.
Madam Chair, this is Phil Donna. I believe you, I don't think that you had an opportunity to speak to this item.
Well, because you guys all said it so well.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just, you know, I guess the short version of mine is my concerns are that it's subjective in a lot of cases. And so I agree wholeheartedly. I don't think there's any way we can rank, yet I have a concern that if we have a significant number that say, hey, this is an easy way to get to the head of the pack, you know, then how do we decide which ones actually get to the head of the pack? But again, I don't think we are professionals, so many of these hardships, I agree that we're going to have to have some type of doctor or medical professional, you know, confirm, because it's easy for me to say I have COPD, never been diagnosed, but I can say it and those types of things. So really, I'm just voicing what everyone else has said.
Hey, Madam Chair? I have Pam Zadaric.
Pam, go ahead.
Are you going to continue on the committee?
I am at this time, however, I'm retiring at the end of the year. And so my plan or hope is that someone can be appointed to replace me before I retire so that there's some level of transition, not, you know, I'm gone, you're a new guy, good luck. So that's where we're at there.
Okay, because I didn't understand if you were just leaving the committee altogether or just stepping down this chair. So a lot of your comments led me to believe that you will still continue on the committee, so I wasn't sure on that. That's why I asked.
Okay, so we've talked about a lot of things we're going to do at the next meeting. The next agenda item is upcoming meetings. The next meeting has not yet been scheduled. If we continue with the regular schedule that we have up till now, the next meeting would be Wednesday, August 17th at 6:00 PM. Are there any comments from the members on our next meetings or meeting schedule?
Madam Chair?
I recognize you, Pam.
That date works for me.
You know, Madam Chair, this is Alan. Are we going in order, or?
Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, I accepted a schedule for that day. So like for the, and I know we've always been doing Wednesdays, but I booked, I already accepted to fill in for someone on the 17th, 18th in August. Wednesday, wow, and the Wednesday before also, the 10th. Didn't think about that because we've been away for such a long time. Yeah, also the 24th, I don't know, I'm going to have to maybe make other arrangements. I don't know. What about, like, since this would only be one month out, is there any way we could do like? Well, no, the 10th also. I might have to make other arrangements. Yeah, I'm stuck. August 10th, August, next Wednesday. If it has to be on a Wednesday, wow.
I think we've always done Wednesday just because it's a convenient day. I don't see a need that we have to have it on a Wednesday.
Well, I could tell you, I could tell you, I'd be open on Wednesday the 9th, I mean, Tuesday the 9th, Tuesday, the following Tuesday, the 16th, also the following Tuesday, the 23rd. I just, if that's possible.
So Alan, I'm going to see if you want to make a motion to schedule the next advisory committee meeting on one of those days.
Well, I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to schedule the next meeting.
On which one of those days?
Tuesday, August 23rd, if we need that much time, or if we could do, if we want to get started a little earlier, how about Tuesday, the 16th?
Like I always tell my mom, you got to pick one. The motion picks one.
A motion to have our next meeting on Tuesday, August 16th?
At 6:00 PM?
At 6:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. This is Phil Donna.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to hold our next advisory committee meeting on Tuesday, August 16th at 6:00 PM. Gabby, will you do the roll call vote?
Yes. Linda Shum?
Yes.
Zach Bowman? Phil Donna Chalik?
Yes.
Alan Gapka?
Yes.
Pam Zadaric?
No.
Representative Angelica Gaurav Koyar?
No.
Representative Martin J. Moylan? Senator Stephen Landak? Senator Laura Murphy? And that was three votes. The motion did not pass.
Okay, so do we have, I'll adjourn to another motion for a different date, for time?
Madam Chair, Pam Zadaric.
Chair recognizes Pam.
What I propose is we also wait and check the availability of all of the new members that have been added to our committee before we sit on a date. I mean, certainly we can propose one month from today, but I think getting input, much like for this meeting, was trying, was a bit of a rigmarole to get everybody, you know, dialed in. So I would say that, I move that we attempt to meet in the next 30 to 40 days based on the scheduling of the majority of the committee members, and that can be coordinated through, I forget, Gabby, perhaps? That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion that we, I'm going to rephrase this, don't schedule the next meetings, or, that we.
Firm date.
Pardon me?
With a firm date, maybe we, you know, we'll try to meet in the next 30 to 40 days, but, you know, try to do that around a majority of the schedule of the committee.
Madam Chair, this is Zach. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now.
Okay, I'm sorry. I attempted to vote on the last, when we were scheduling for the last one, but I don't think I was heard, which, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I could be heard now.
You're fading in and out.
That's so weird. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to derail our conversation.
I think what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask for a motion to, well, basically, I don't think we need a motion. What I'm going to do is ask Gabby, contact all of the committee members, and ask them for a date within the next four to six weeks, a set of dates that they would be available, and to try to get that answer within the next week or two to schedule the next meeting, because if we wait till the last minute, then people schedule other things. So if Gabby could just reach out to everybody and say, what's your schedule on, you know, in this timeframe, if you want to give us good dates or bad dates, and then maybe she can match up and see a date that everybody is available, and we'll schedule the meeting then.
Madam Chair, can I be recognized?
Zach, Zach, you're rec, yes, the chair recognizes Zach.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just note for the, you know, we did this approach in, following our February meeting of waiting for the, a date that the elected officials could all meet. It ended up taking from February to July. We scheduled the meeting, only two of the elected officials attended, and only, I would argue, one did so meaningfully. So I'm not confident that our approach of checking everyone's calendar and trying to come up with a date at a later time is really going to produce a great result.
Well, yeah, they weren't even here. This is Alan for the rest of the meeting, for this last vote.
Yeah. Let's give it one more shot with that approach, and if that doesn't work, then we will go back to just having regular scheduled meeting dates and, you know, we'll look at when they're in session, knowing they won't be available then, and maybe work around that. But beyond that, probably just do the best we can and continue to hold the meetings. But let's try, let's give them, we'll give them another chance. But after this, if it doesn't work, then we'll have to come up with just a regular schedule. So again, Gabby, I'm going to ask you to reach out and, you know, and if nobody responds in two weeks, give them about two weeks. If they don't respond, we're just going to schedule a date.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, I'm moving forward with public comments. And as a reminder, Gabby will post in the chat, she's already done that, the residential sound installation program office number and email for O'Hare and Midway Homes. This contact information is also listed at the bottom of the meeting agenda. It's also on the website. With that, I open the floor to public comments. Gabby, were there any comments received prior to the advisory committee meeting?
Yes, we received one email from Patty Aguilar on June 22nd, asking when our next meeting would be, so today's meeting. But that is the only comment in the emails, and I don't see any in the chat.
Are there any other public comments from people who have joined the meeting? Quiet group. Okay, with that, I'm going to move forward then. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Pam Zadaric, Madam Chair, I motion we adjourn.
Okay, there's, Pam has motion we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Phil Donna.
Okay, Phil Donna, second. Gabby, will you do the roll call vote?
Yes. Linda Shum?
Yes.
Zach Bowman?
Yes.
Phil Donna Chalik?
Yes.
Alan Gapka?
Yes.
Pam Zadaric?
Yes.
Representative Angelica Gaurav Koyar?
Yes.
Representative Martin J. Moylan? Senator Stephen Landak? Senator Laura Murphy? And the motion passed.
Okay, okay, this meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you, and hopefully in the next week or two, we'll have our next meeting scheduled.